Playing basketball last weekend and she ran off the court at halftime.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
It is five o'clock and welcome to tonight's committee, the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Laura Gapsky.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Sarah Schubert-McConne.
Here.
Shelley Moe.
Here.
Catherine Gaman.
Here.
President Steve Olson.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here.
With my compliance of all official notifications, this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school statistics business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment sign up sheet by the entrance. Prior to the start of the meeting, the board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Are there any comments from any members of the public tonight, Anne?
No.
Then we shall move on. First on the agenda is a report from our superintendent.
Okay, I have two informational items this month. The first, well, the second agenda item actually we'll share next week. For the last several years, we've been recognizing a teacher, a guest teacher of the year, so we'll bring that recognition next Monday. So this week I have Mr. Haraldson.
Oh, here, you are first up.
Well, you're not guest teacher. I'm saying you're the first agenda. Next week I got guest teacher of the year.
You might be. You be up. Questions?
Thanks, Ryan. Um, great. So, you know, I guess I guess tradition, I've kind of been the middle of the year at the end of the semester and it's a good sign when I'm here at this time of the year. We're almost made it through another year. So I'm just going to provide some brief updates on Great Lakes celebration. One thing, there's only one celebration I want to bring attention to. Um, we just got recognized mid-April for being a model professional learning community and I'll explain a little bit of what that entails. Um, big deal to my staff, many of which have been there for many years and I can think back to 2017, sitting in Denver, Colorado at an RTI. Institute and seeing a couple of the schools get featured that had gotten this recognition before and talking to staff and saying, we're going to get there at some point and we did. So I'm really excited to share that. Um, just a little bit about that, how do you get this award? You have to show evidence of growth at every grade level, minimum period of three years. Has to be growth in math and reading. You have to show growth in every grade level and you also have to show growth for low socioeconomic students. And students who are of the special education status. There's also a category for English language learners, but we didn't. We have such a small percentage of them, like that just wasn't really considered in there, but those three areas I did. This accomplishment for all of my teachers, 4K through fifth grade, we had to submit 4K data to, um. Which we had to dig a little harder for, but I've got a really good 4K teacher that keeps great records and we had some great growth in that area too. Grades three through five is state testing data. This data I'm not going to talk a lot about, but the, I mean, if you look at the stuff that was submitted between 2021 and 2024. Um, green and blue is really good. Um, the gold is like, ah, we'd like it to be a little bit better and the red, I would say is not acceptable. So while I'm sharing this for math, um, these are great things and we're seeing trends go in the right direction. Um, we're still not satisfied because we've got some more kids that still need to get to higher levels in in math. Um, we should, ELA is kind of our bread and butter. It's what we've really focused on. So you can see we've done, we probably have made more progress there. Um, but that's just a little bit of some of the stuff I submitted to get that recognition. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to my old school community, the kids, the parents, everybody. I mean, lots of people doing lots of things to get kids to higher levels of learning. Um, the second part of getting this award, you have to show evidence of professional learning community practices. So I had to submit things like my master's scheduled admission vision. I had to submit products from my PLC teams that showed evidence of collaborative practice. Evidence they had common formative assessments and they were using that assessment data to continue to push kids forward. Um, you know, I, to go through all this in depth would take me hours, but that's just a little bit of it. If you've got questions, I can certainly talk to you about those at a different time.
Can I just go back?
Yeah.
I mean, I, this is about PLCs and the PLC recognition that you receive and I do think, I mean, you, your building does this very well, but as a district.
Yep.
Um, we really do talk about data and have those collaborative conversations and I would argue that's, that doesn't happen in in all districts. I would say they turn sometimes more into like department meetings or, um, you guys truly, I think, do the work of a PLC and all in our, our buildings as a whole do. And so I just, it's a pretty big accomplishment.
And I will, I'll put a side note on that too. Like I, other buildings, I think I've been in that spot the longest. So I, I, I mean, it would be to be expected that at some point we would, we would figure this out. Certainly had some mistakes along the way early on. Um, I think other administrators are doing a great job with these practices in place. I know there's been some growth. Um, across all the elementary buildings for sure, in ELA and math, which is great. And if they just keep honing in and pushing these practices further, I can pretty much guarantee that'll continue.
But when you, when you talk about your third bullet, evidence of collaborative team practices, that's hard to do. That's not, that's not a simple bullet is what I'm trying to say. So I just, it's pretty impressive at Great Lakes as well as our other schools too. Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be other, there's other buildings that'll be on their way to this if they, if they keep focused on the right work, definitely. Um, okay, challenges like, I don't know, we got eight days left. I mean, these challenges aren't, they don't matter that much anymore like, but I'll, I'll rec. Just recognize like the transition was amazing. Um, I think behaviorally, uh, just thinking about my staff. Uh, we just shouldering some of the pretty heavy behavioral mental health needs, particularly in three of my grade levels. But I also want to say too, throughout the year, we found some solutions. Good internal plans and also getting kids connected up with the external researches that we do have. Um, which I know we talk a lot about or lacking a little bit compared to maybe some other places, um, but at least we're getting some kids into the ones that we do have. You know, I, I can't talk about forward data or Kate will get mad because it's embargoed and I told Sarah the other day too, I'm like, I can't talk about that. Um, she was in my office and, um, but, but we will eventually, once it's, uh, once it's been lifted. Um, we were however, able to look at some of our forward data in ELA. I, we really held our ground, which was amazing. Um, in math, we, we did lose a little proficiency, so I'm, I am looking forward to taking that challenge on a little bit and seeing what the reason is. I will say though, I'm a little hesitant to turn to a math goal because we've got a new literacy resource next year. And I know the district is also talking about like some updates for math curriculum down the road. So I'm looking at Crystal. I don't know that I really want to go there. I will go back to some things that Kate taught me like six or seven years ago. And make sure we're doing those to fidelity when she was at Bryant because they had some amazing, um, math results there and she was able to help me. So those are just a couple of things. I can probably elaborate on that when I come back around in the fall again. Um, just a little update on our school goals for our continuous improvement plan. So in the fall, we, we chose a goal that aligned with some of the Act 20 reading law that we had to do. So we had 67% of our kids were scoring higher than the 25th percentile. This is K5 and I had to use a cross section of data like letter names and sounds. Oral reading fluency, that's the ORF, and then A reading is a comprehension piece in fifth grade. We set out to get 90% of the 25th percentile or higher. Um, I went through that this morning. We didn't make the 90%. I'm disappointed in that, but we did get about an 18%. It's just in that yearly C, bless you, it's that yearly CIP goal. So I'm pretty proud of that. Would like to have seen that get to 90, but I think we gave our best effort and. Well, as we reestablished with like a 30, 40% turnover in our student population, it's a really good stepping stone. So we can just keep. Um, pushing achievement to higher levels regardless of what kids you put in front of us. Um, action steps. We're, we're kind of at the, I mean, I'm not going to be doing anything significant in the next eight days. Um, but like, we talked a lot about a master's schedule, which we talk about having PLCs, professional learning communities and supporting kids and supporting their needs. That is a really important thing to make sure we have a schedule built, so it's structured to give kids the support they need. So we actually, uh, redid our master's schedule based on the resources we had, we have next year. And I think we've got a way to make our RTI a little bit more systematic. I think we lost some, some rhythm with that this year with some of our paracuts and stuff, but we've. Found some solutions, um, and we're gonna surpass our previous highs for proficiency. And we will be at 85% meeting in advance and 100% approaching meeting in advance on the forward exam and I will let you know when we get there. Um, I don't want any more kids in developing in the entire district. So like, we all need to work together to make sure that happens because it's not acceptable. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I love it, but, um, if there are any I can take and otherwise I think I'm going to leave early and walk my dogs. That's all right.
I think you've done a remarkable job and.
Steve, yeah.
Had the privilege of watching you grow in this.
You did.
This, uh, district.
I'm thankful that, uh, you might've been on one of the hiring teams and thankful I was brought here. It's one heck of a district we got and just going to get better. So, good people.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Nice job. Well done. Thank you. Any other? Or whatever.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you.
You're a little cooler out there, so warm. Next, we have our board committee reports. First of all, our policies and rules committee. And, uh, Shelley is going to kick off tonight's meetings and stuff and for two of the members, it's, it's brand new to them and.
Yep.
Patience. If you have any questions, make sure and ask as we move forward.
Great. I have one informational item tonight. School Resource Officer Program Report for the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to Policy 8407. We have the Superior Middle School Superior Resource Officer Matt Swanson and the Superior High School School Resource Officer Amanda Mondell.
Thank you. Being here.
Thank you. Welcome.
And Amanda's new to, uh, your, when did you start?
Um, I officially started full-time on April 7th. Um, I was hired for the position when Officer Dars retired back in November. I was on maternity leave, so, so moved to the full time, started April.
Welcome.
Uh, so first, uh, we'll, you know, go from the youngest up, uh, going through numbers, uh, for this year. Um, let's see, Cooper at 16 incidents and, and that includes everything from officers stopping in just to do community policing and say, you know, hi to the kids in the morning. Um, but it also includes if, if we had to arrest people, it's just if a, an incident number was punched at all.
Does that include truancy reports?
It does include truancy.
It does. Okay.
And so, you know, Cooper with one juvenile arrest, uh, I believe that one was a truancy. Uh, and then compared to last year, they had 18 incidents, so very consistent. Um, and there was really nothing notable, um. Like nothing, no crazy calls at any of the elementaries that are even worth going over. Bryant, they had 30 incidents, which is, um, actually up from last year. They had 12. But nine of them are community policing, traffic details. Um, we were out there quite a bit, um, enforcing traffic and everything. So that's why that number's bumped up. Um. And then you'll see one adult arrest, but that was a, uh, a drunk driver. So it really wasn't school related. I think it just ended up stopping in the parking lot and that's, that the address got put. Great Lakes at 16, uh, last year they had 20. Yes, your arrest at all, not even any truencies. Northern Lights, uh, with 26, that was the same numbers last year as well. And they had an adult arrest. That was a hit and run. So nothing in the building. Four Corners, um, with two incidents. Last year they had four. So everything was very consistent. Um. Part of, uh, part of the year two though, principals were kind of encouraged to try and take care of a little bit more, uh, themselves instead of calling us because. For a little bit, I was the only one doing all schools. Um, and so I was really happy when I got to let everyone know that that's no longer the case and please call me and.
They appreciate that too.
And I appreciate that. All the schools serve the attention and the service that we promised them. Yeah, if you can scroll, yeah, or thank you. See, middle school first, uh, because that's still me. Um, so 115 incidents, that is significantly down, uh, from last year. Last year we had 176, um, but that included about 30 truancy warnings, which, uh, that I send out where that's not required. It's only required in truancy that schools send out warnings. Uh, but when I had time last year, um, I liked to send out an official police warning letter, give them, you know, one last chance. Because a lot of times that, you know, they kind of made them realize like, oh, all right, I, I gotta get to school because I'm about to get a ticket. Uh, so this year I, I hardly did any of those and so that brought our incident numbers way down. We also had a ton of fights. Um, it was awesome. It wasn't a huge problem last year, but this year we, we almost had none. Um, it was incredible. And so I don't know if there was a heavy enforcement on it last year or if we just had a group of kids who went up to the high school and maybe there's. But, but that's been awesome. And so our, I would say our biggest problem, and it's not a problem, um, but it's like pornography cases. Um, um, kids with cell phones, they don't have 4K cameras now. And so we had, uh, five pornography cases where, um, it was. Pictures that got spread around that shouldn't. And then we also had a few more, um, drug incidents, uh, than before. And that was still only six, but that's, uh, I think it was all THC vapes. Um, it's so easy to get those things in the schools now. And so that's the growing problem. Um, one of our incidents was a student used another student's THC vape and got so sick that they had to go home. Um, and so that one turned into an arrest. And so we're seeing stuff like that. It's scary. They, they don't even smell now, you know, we suspect it. Uh, some kids in the bathroom, we go in there immediately afterwards and there's not even a smell, but then, uh, you know, they get searched a little bit later and we find one on. So that's, that's scary. Uh, still kind of trying to figure out the best way to tackle that and. Uh, and go about it. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. The, these, uh, these numbers, um, well, you don't really see them at all, so I want to talk about it, but it's speak up, speak out. Which I, I assume everyone here is familiar, but if anyone doesn't know, it's our anonymous tip recording system in the schools. So any student, teacher, um, on phone or computer can submit an anonymous tip at any time. And so I just wanted to go over some of the categories, um, because most of these ones will, will come to me, uh, Officer Mondell for us to, to investigate. Um, I kind of lumped some of the categories together. And so first we have concerns of suicide, self-harm and depression. We had 43 tips on those categories this year. Uh, sexting and pornography together, we had nine tips come in that we investigated. Guns, knife and weapons tips, we had seven. Concerns of school attack, we had seven anonymous tips on those, on that. Sexual assault and sexual misconduct, we had 20 tips. Drugs, alcohol and vaping, work teen and child abuse, we had four tips. And so all those were investigated. Um, they don't all generate an incident number. Um, whether it's something that's, um, just not totally founded. Uh, for example, we got a, uh, a concern of school tack tip, um, you know, just a month or so ago. That said, so and so, uh, says he's going to shoot up the school. We start looking into it and talking to people and it, it turned out, um, the tipster who wrote it, he was getting bullied earlier in the day and out of frustration. He wrote that another student said he was going to shoot up the school, which that never happened. And so, you know, that, that doesn't really make it in here, but it was taken care of within the school. And so we addressed, you know, making the false report, but then also addressed the bullying. So, other than that.
Did you mention the child abuse stat again? How many tips?
There was four tips on child abuse.
And sometimes that's like students overhearing their classmates say things and so it's students reporting to protect their, their peers. Yeah. It's usually what it is, don't you think?
Yep. Um, for example, I think one of them this year was a student reported, um, that their friend is getting abused at home because there's never anything to eat. And it turned out that that student, night before, didn't like what their parents served them for dinner.
Yep.
Uh, so things like that can happen. Um, but I, I guess what I want to say about that is, you know, we, we get tips like that, that, you know, there's, there's really nothing to it. But then everyone's like, we get a tip and, and it is so helpful. Like it's something that we would not have found out about if we didn't have speak up, speak out. And so it's a, an amazing resource.
Yeah.
High school?
And then. Um, so the high school had 268 incidents. Um, I said I didn't start till April full-time. I did pick up some overtime shifts in between there, but during my full-time spot, I have generated 54 calls in the last 36 days of school. Um, 24 of those were arrests. Um, when you look at the adult arrests, the 16, that's mostly because they're 18 years old. So if they're getting like a truancy citation from me, there, it's considered an adult arrest because they're 18 and they're of legal age. Uh, it's the same with the like disorderly conduct or if we had, I had two. Bite citations that I had to give out because they were 18 of eight. So that's what the adult arrests are. There are a couple that were generated from patrol, so they happened on night. Another one was an OWI driver was caught in our. Um, parking lot, so he got arrested there. Um, the juvenile arrests are 91. Again, that's, most of them are truancy because in our system, an arrest is, we give a citation, that's considered an arrest. So the truancy is, you're seeing 91 because we have a lot of students that do not want to come to school. Um, I will tell you that I have the 24 arrests that I have made since April, 20 of them have been truancies. So the four other citations that I'm giving out are damage to properties, the fight citations that I recommend that I stated. And then I did give out an ordinance violation too for baby. Um, there are, like we mentioned, those incidents that are generated are only generated with the address of the school. There are incidents that I do handle from students that come into my office and want to make a record of things that happen while they're at home. And I still take those reports. Um, I have eight pending major reports from students just in the month, two months that I've been there. Um, and they're not included in those numbers because the addresses were not at the high school. The incident actually happened at home. So I will take those reports from them. So then I can forward it to the detective bureau to do further investigation. Any questions about?
For last year's numbers.
Or incidents?
For the high schools, yes. Uh, last year incidents was 317, adult arrests 29 and juvenile 99.
Having that historical background is really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other questions at all? Thank you guys for what you do.
All right.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. All right.
Great.
Action items.
Yes, we have a couple of action items this evening. Um, administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Niola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law updates. And this is new, a first reading of Policy 5411. Third grade promotion and retention at-risk students. In 2023, Wisconsin enacted Act 20 to strengthen early literacy efforts. As part of this law, school districts must implement a policy for promoting students from third to fourth grade. Following the model provided by the Department of Public Instruction. Niola with legal guidance has developed a policy in compliance with Act 20 and the DPI model. Districts are required to adopt this policy by July 1, 2025. We will be implementing this policy September 1, 2027 by state statute.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We have Kate and Crystal here, if you guys have any questions, but this is just, I mean, I think the biggest reason that we're looking at implementing this a year, two years from now. Is, um, the organization that has to take place because part of this requires some summer school offerings. And so we want to be able, that, that plays into that, right?
That, that's the most significant change from previous promotion policies is now in the Act 20 language around statute of promotion. Uh, their reading, so if they are still on a personal reading plan, meaning they have not scored at the 25th percentile or higher on the oral reading fluency in third grade. And additionally, in the meeting category on the forward exams, they have to have both of those to exit their personal reading plan. Then, uh, they, the, the language in, uh, this new draft guidance is they have to be offered. Summer explicit instruction around reading continuing through summer programming. And then of course that continues to fourth grade. So we are in a much better place than most districts. Many districts don't have some useful offerings really at all, but we will be doing some work to make sure that we have. More intensive reading support. It's always a balance of kids and kids enjoying summer versus like intensive reading support. Uh, so we'll take the time. We had to adopt it by this July, but we don't have to implement it until 2027.
There's that timeframe then that they have to attend summer school? No, just being not required.
A specific teacher licensed journal will come into play and provide that instruction, which will be something we'll need to plan ahead for too.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Are you? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the first reading of Policy 2271.01, Start College Now program. The policy is updated to reflect that in addition to any tuition cost, the law requires that the district pay the cost of course fees and books. To the same extent that a student who is attending the technical college and who is a resident of this state would be charged. Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, the statute or the, the policy has changed to reflect the statute, but this has been our con, our common practice, right Heidi? So this doesn't really change our practices. We've been doing this, but now the language will align to statute and our current practice, correct? Is there anything else you think we need to talk about in regards to this?
This is the, uh, we're running at the technical college level. We also have a choice program, which is at the UW level. There's very similar reporting for both of the policies, but, um, we get a student this year that took the EMT course at Northwood Tech. This allowed us to provide some specialized equipment that they needed to have in order to take that class in addition to the books. So I need to think those things here.
How many students typically take advantage of this?
I would say we have, in the Start College Now, I would say we have one to four each semester in the CCPD. It would be similar numbers depending on, just criteria that have to be approved for these courses, but yeah, I would say that's probably.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ends my report to Mr. President.
Thank you. Operations Committee. Abby and Sarah.
Two action items, which is exciting because I don't usually have actions. Administration recommends approval of the annual resolution 25 dash 01 Compliance Maintenance Resolution, CMAR summary. I am assuming that this has to do with wastewater. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do you want to, do you, can you kind of tell us what this is? I know I'm kind of putting you on. Yeah.
Yeah, you can see the RF on our wastewater ponds.
Okay.
Just came up short a little bit on our phosphorus. They reclassified the little, uh, stream that already fluent drained out into. Do a fish aquatic life, warm water, sport, history community. And so that adjusted our phosphorus levels. We were good, made, um. Some adjustments to our cleaning, um, chemicals that we use, um, and we're trending in the right direction. Our latest, uh, test results were 0.99. Uh, we were at 1.5 milligrams per liter and we're supposed to be at 1.4. We're trending right.
Do you know how this compares to last year? I mean, you're saying we're trending, but you know.
Um, last year we were a little, little lower and I believe it was a lot. Do it this, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
Deluded our confidence.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Administration recommends an increased cost for all student and staff lunches effective July 1, 2025.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Jamie, how many years are we on raising this again? Like.
Raise it every year.
Can you talk a little bit about why that is?
Thanks.
I know, he is up next. All right.
We are required to take a look at it every year, and instead of taking a large increase and taking a couple of years off, my goal is let's do a little each year. What this comes to is about twenty six dollars per year per student. And I really don't look at that lightly. You know, if you have three or four kids and you're on the bubble, you know, that's another hundred dollars that we're talking about our school year. But our costs this year have gone up about sixty thousand dollars in food costs alone. And that is um, about the same number of meals that we served last year, almost identical to the same number. It's gotta come from somewhere. It's no different than what we're doing here with um, Fund Ten budget. We are not seeing any more funding.
I would assume you have less funding, actually.
Yeah.
Federal cuts.
I know, in our three million dollar budget, we're probably seeing about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less this year.
Right.
Any other questions? Well, I do want to add though that last year, you know, our fund balance is pretty solid in our department. Um, and that's why we raise these prices, just continue to be.
Healthy, right?
Yep. But last year we came to before the board and we got rid of the reduced cost, which was a quarter for about two hundred of our students, two to three hundred. Um, those are the things that we try and look at. And we raise prices here, but I think our reduced kids are more, families are more on the bu- bubble than anybody. And can't see sending somebody to collections that can't pay us a quarter for lunch. Let's just.
So just to clarify for newer board members, a year ago, we eliminated any costs for kids who actually qualified for reduced costs, right? So if you qualify for free or reduced, it's free.
Free.
It's not a reduced cost.
And all our students receive free breakfast at all our schools. That's our free reduced or paid students. Everybody gets free breakfast in after school. At our middle school and high school, we offer free meals um, for all our students there, or anybody who actually comes through. Cool.
Thanks, Jamie.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and then Jamie is here to give us an update about food service.
So we talked about uh, we try to feed kids wherever they are, um, and our summer program starts the Friday or the Monday night after school gets out, where we will be out in the community in our food service van um, at Lakeside Terrace, Aspen Forest, Partly Manor, Manor and Heritage um, Bay Park. Then we also support the park and rec sites, beginning, you know, that same week through the middle of August. Um, all our summer school sites and a handful of other sites, about twenty sites around the community. We budget to serve about anywhere from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand meals um, at our school site, it's in all our community sites. Um, flyer is there and we'll be pushing it like crazy through the community. Um, we do it with as many partners as we can. Anybody who comes forward to us and can offer a program, um, we try and feed them for free.
When's the end date for that? It's always into August, right, Jamie?
Um, we start the day after school gets out, and we feed the week before school gets out. Um, I have staff that need hours. It works out really well, and in order to give them hours, they feed kids. Um, so August looks really good at the high school. That's generally where we serve it, aside from our van. Um, it's there's just a lot of movement at the high school. We try to capture as many kids as they come through for whatever program they need to be there for. I know um, they do that ninth grade orientation and they talk to us and say, what works for you? Um, we try to feed all kids for free breakfast and lunch on that day. So um, we have just a great partnership with all admin. We'll say, what's going on? How do we feed kids? And they help us out any way they can to.
What do you think is the most popular community or parks and rec site?
Park and rec site? The one south, what's south end? Thank you. What's dirty, yeah.
Got the most kids.
Uh, they do really well. You know, it it's kind of, I drive around this time of year and and I say, where are the pockets? Where do I see kids hanging out? I don't care if it's on the weekend or where do I see it's playing? And it's like, what are we missing? Um, we try to hit between that parking wreck site and what we do every pocket. And I don't, I know we can't hit everywhere, but I think we do a pretty darn good job. That parking wreck partnership is unreal. I mean, six sites in town that have been running it forever, and we just bring meals there and they work well. They come and pick them up, they serve them. They know that any kid shows up, it doesn't have to be part of that program, and they can feed them.
Love it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Teaching and learning, Mr. Nick Walker.
All right, we have exactly zero action items and discussion items as well. Um, informational items, Crystal, it's been directed. Russian summer professional development.
Everybody, this time of year, I'd like to just share a little bit about what we have going on in our department for professional development in the summer. And I'll give you another little update in August about all like the back to school and new teacher stuff. So what I'm talking about is primarily like starting like Monday, June sixteenth through probably the second week in August. Um, each summer, we try to fill the gap of what didn't we have time for teachers to get done with some deeper curriculum projects during the school year? Because our staff development days are full, you know, weekly meetings that teachers have for PLC time. No, those are needed to be spent on taking that data and planning for instruction in the moment. So it's harder to find extended hours for teachers to really dig in and do those bigger projects. So I always give PLCs an opportunity to fill out a Google form and say, here's what our team needs some some help with this summer and some work time for. So this summer, we have thirty five middle school and high school teachers with their PLC, their team of teachers, they were teach the same course with their grade level with that are going to be doing some work across the board in content areas. Sometimes it's dependent on if there are new standards coming out in a particular, particular area, or they want to do some digging into assessments or proficiency tables. Um, I will tell you that the number thirty five is kind of a low number. We usually have more than that. So I think part of that is to this school year that we're about to end. We had a lot more pullout professional development time um, than we had had in previous years since COVID. So we kind of returned to that model. So teams did have a little more time typically, whatever, in the last few years. Um, we also offer for workshop dates where if you need to do a project but don't need a lot of like help or P V with that work that you're going to do. So we have twenty teachers signed up to come to our workshop dates. And then our math committee, our smaller committee that's working on our new courses for math, scope and sequence, course descriptions, they're going to be coming together this summer also to work. And then the last thing that I wanted to share is kind of a little bit of a different approach that we're taking to the book study option. Doing book studies uh, has been a really popular thing for our teachers and administrators the last few summers. Um, digging in and reading a professional book in the summer is is a little bit easier than trying to do that during the school year if teachers have time. So instead of offering several books to choose from, as we've done the last couple of summers, we decided this year to take the approach of one district, one read. Like if you're going to be part of the book study experience, let's all read the same book. So we are reading ten to twenty five, and that refers to ages, ages ten to twenty five year olds. Uh, The Science of Motivating Young People, A Groundbreaking Approach to Leading the Next Generation and Making Your Own Life Easier by Dr. David Yeager. Um, so we have forty five teachers who signed up to be part of this. It's a read at your own pace, and then we're offering a late June option and an early August option to come together for discussion. And our instructional coaches are going to be facilitating uh, the book study discussions. So um, I do have a couple of extra copies.
You may have some board members who want, who like a copy, yeah.
I do have, I think, three or four extra copies that haven't been taken yet. So if you're interested in reading it, let me know. Uh, you can definitely uh, read one and join in the discussion even if you wanted to, or you're welcome to obviously just to read it and and see what you think. Um, our summer work is paid for uh, by extend at with extended contract pay. That's what our teachers get paid to be part of any of the curriculum work. Hourly pay or to be part of the book study, they're also getting paid to engage in this. Um, and that all comes from our Title II grant funding. So it will again this summer. Um, I will tell you, the federal funding conversation is still a little bit uh, uncertain. We did get our Title One allocation finally from DPI, I think it was last week. Um, we were reminded by DPI that Title Two and Title Four grant funds have not yet been allocated from the federal level to the state level to then up yet, and typically by now we know that allocation. So we have some carryovers this year that we'll be able to use to fund this work this summer. Um, but I just wanted to share with you kind of where that work usually gets paid from. So you know that we may need to plan differently in the future if those funds are out. So, do you have any questions?
That book is great, by the way.
Have you read it? Awesome. Yeah, we're, those that have read it are, it was definitely like on the list of let's do this one. We also considered doing The Anxious Generation, which is another pretty popular book right now. Um, but we try to find a book that kind of can speak to a lot of people, um, not just be from a more parenting lens or a particular content area. So we're looking forward to look, and if you'd like to read one, I've got some copies, just let me know. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Crystal.
All right, Kate, Test Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment, end of year AGR report and annual bullying report prescribed to policy five five seven. In print zero one.
All right, this is your semester exam on what AGR stands for. Two people are exempt from this text as it's your first time with the uh, achievement gap reduction. Good, Mr. Nelson. Uh, by statute, I'm here on behalf of the principals sharing an update with you. Uh, AGR goes back as a new version of what used to be called Sage, which was a pretty groundbreaking work that happened in the state of Wisconsin long ago, which was really focused on reducing class sizes. That was a pretty rigid program. Obviously not completely funded, sounded great until we had to have lots more teacher, a fair amount uh, more teachers and not the money to support the low class sizes. So it has morphed into what they now refer to at the state as AGR, uh, achievement gap reduction, and we can use one of three strategies now, not just small class size. Uh, we can use small class size ratio of eighteen to one or smaller. We can use uh, instructional coaches to support the work we have. And we can also use a tutoring uh, approach where we can use peer professionals that qualify under that statute. Please. So we do use a variety of those strategies depending on the school and the grade level and the sections. Um, and my report to you, through AGR, the principals have to submit a report twice a year um, on their achievement. So of those students that are in uh, schools and classrooms that qualify for AGR funds, Four Corners does not uh, based on their free reduced status. So it is just of other four elementary schools, and it is grades K through three. So what we do is I support the principals in gathering the data and we track data just like we do on our continuous improvement plan. Has to look a little different for the DPI. But we track reading and math indicators, proficiency, and then also growth. So we may have a group of kids that we have seventy five percent of the kids have met the benchmark, but then we're also looking at how many have demonstrated growth throughout the year, which is an important indicator as well. So kindergarten through third grades, we've seen some really nice trends this year. It was also the messiest year we've had with data because of Act Twenty. So we started the year with Fastbridge. We were intentional to use similar assessments, but it's a little bit of um, apples to oranges when you start with one assessment and you use a different assessment, even though they're both measuring letter sounds or letter identification. Um, sometimes the measurement isn't. So next year it will be cleaner. Um, I think we're gonna do some work around really trying to streamline it with our goals so that it doesn't create kind of, I mean, I will still need to update you uh, per statute, but it should hopefully be a little more streamlined together. So in general, we're seeing some nice uh, growth at our K through three levels. I think um, Ryan spoke about it, you, those of you in our strategic planning process, math is an area of focus, definitely, and we're seeing that pretty numerously. So um, I will continue to work on that with the principals. Uh, any questions? Just kind of basic level. All right, next report. Uh, the statute around bullying and harassment. Uh, I do have a little very brief slideshow, one because I wanted to capture the information. Um, just as a placeholder for you to look back at if you had some questions. Um, you know, for some reason the bottom is a little cut off. That's okay. I'll just, I think it's just the first slide. So in general, we have, this report is identifying data related to fifty five seventeen, our student anti harassment policy, and also fifty five seventeen oh one, our bullying policy. So I wanted to include our our district statement, and then on the next slide, which I flickered, uh, I wanted to put the definition up here. I think it's really important from a broad perspective how harassment is defined and how bullying is defined on the next slide. So I have these separated out. I think one of the biggest challenges for principals, teachers, staff, principals, is often uh, the statement of my child is being harassed, or I'm being harassed, or I'm being bullied. I think the word bullying is used frequently. We have to take those reports seriously, but we also need to do an investigation, and often it isn't classified bullying by our definition of policy, but it is something we need to address. However, we do need to report out statistics specific around bullying and harassment. So the work of the principals and counselors and all teacher staff is really getting to the investigation part and determining is it fall under the definition, or is it an issue, an incident that happens kind of parallel in terms of a student discipline?
Can I give a quick example? So you may have a student who maybe is engaged in name calling as an example. Um, whereas bullying is intentional behavior using words and actions intended to cause fear and intimidation or harm. It's repeated and involves imbalance of power. The description of like name calling may not be bullying. It may be another um, behavior in uh, referral as part of our code of conduct, but it wouldn't necessarily fall under the bullying unless this happened over a period of time and there's an imbalance of power and a kind of, does that make sense? So that's sort of, I just wanted to kind of clarify that because that happens every day in our schools, I think, that we have managed that.
And that's the management perspective, especially like from a principal lens of filtering through the information and taking it seriously, but also applying the context. A five year old and a sixteen year old doing similar behaviors aren't always, it's not the same always. So uh, in our district, we, we have a lot of information, and we have a comprehensive approach to bullying prevention. It's all we do a lot of work throughout the year. It's not just one month, it's not just one lesson. Um, so I think that's really important to identify as well. We're continuing to do the work to prevent, uh, not just report on the incidents. So what you see here on the left uh, bar graph, you're seeing all reported uh, bullying and harassment incidents. The blue bar graph is last year, so we had a hundred and thirty seven. Um, that warranted investigation, and this year we had seventy nine. And then on the right, those seventy, those overall incidents were broken down, and after investigation, you can see the amount that were substantiated versus unsubstantiated. And so I think following trends that you've seen with other incidents and behavior, um, we're following that same trend of a reduction in reports and a reduction, which is is positive. So um, that, and then I broke it down just a little bit further, just so you could see kind of in general where the location of the incidences, incidents are being reported to have happened. Again, the blue bar graph was last year, the yellow orange is this year. Um, so our, our highest location where the incidents are occurring or having been reported to occur would be in classrooms, but a significant drop there this year. Um, followed by the cafeteria, gym, hallway, um, and some aren't, don't have a specific location identified because potentially it's happening in numerous places with one individual. The small bar graph in the upper right corner is uh, incidents by gender. Um, and on the bottom would be incidents by ethnicity. So just kind of a, I think sometimes it's helpful to get a little snapshot, digging a little further. Obviously, it could pull a whole lot more reports.
So these are offenders. Do you have victim?
We do have victim information as well.
Yep.
Yep, we do have them differentiated. If you think about this, have follow up questions, feel free to shoot me an email and I can reply with additional information or ask, ask questions. I know sometimes it takes a minute to like think through information, anything.
Send this to us.
Yes, yep.
Thanks, Kate.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I guess I just want to say one more thing. I guess I just want to say one more thing. A couple of years ago, um, we put together a pretty, I think, robust in bullying and harassment investigation process to be able to track incidents across grade levels or buildings to track victims or offenders. We, we sort of modeled after some of the statute in Minnesota. Some of us had come from schools in Minnesota. And so we tried to apply some of those practices that were required by law over there to some good practice here. Um, so I think the principals have been doing a good job of that. So that's, that is something that's been new the last couple of years.
I think it gives us good information from a tracking perspective too that, you know, often as a principal, a, a parent may say, no one, the school's never done anything about this, but we can see even though we believe they have been unsubstantiated, we do have record of reports.
And I think a big part of that investigation process is the communication piece. So there's a required follow-up letter to the families who are involved to document the investigation and the next steps and future reports and things like that. So that I think has been the most important part of that process.
It is definitely a, an intensive process that principals have done a very nice job.
Thanks, Kate.
Yep, you're welcome.
That's all, Steve, for me.
Thank you, Personnel Negotiations, Mr. Nick Olson.
Exactly one action item. Administration recommends approval of the June twenty-twenty-five new hires and separations report. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? First of all, thank you for everybody on there that is leaving us and welcome to those of us, those of you that are joining us.
Are the uh, math position at high school and if that posted and early childhood?
For the childhood, it hasn't happened. While that one's in your own building right now.
How are we doing on bus drivers?
Pretty good right now. I'm gonna be looking for one more. I'm gonna put the bus back up.
Your advertising campaign.
Works.
It does work, I know. That was you and David. I know you're taking team in that idea, right, David?
Driving fourth of July, great.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, she carries. And that concludes my report.
That's very good. That's it. No more. Sorry to hear that. Legislative Committee, Oregowski.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I also have zero action items, zero discussion items, but exactly one informational item. Democratic Governor Tony Evers rather met twice with GOP legislative leaders as budget talks have ramped up according to multiple sources, sorry. Think, I don't feel like it's important to read all of this, but I think the most important thing is that um, the joint finance committee's progress on the budget has been put on hold. That the proposals that Evers has made and including uh, a document and act on ten agencies, um, has been threatened to be stripped. And the co-chairs said that they're planning to wait for new revenue estimates from the Legislative Fiscal Bureau before taking any substantive action on the budget. So since those numbers were revised last week, showing that the state would take in three hundred and fifty-five million less through the end of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven budget than previously expected. Uh, and the committee has yet to notice a hearing. Um, I know in Minnesota, they've done um, special session for their budget. And so I'm not sure where Wisconsin's at on that right now, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our final report, the Budget Insurance Committee, Catherine?
I have two action items. One is gifts, grants and requests. Um, administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and requests received in May twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second. Look at that. Yay.
Well, impressive that it's.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, the next one is administration recommends approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Did you get to see it?
Yeah.
Yes, I started.
We're starting the discussion.
Well, all right. So um, this is the preliminary budget adoption um, for the next fiscal year. Uh, this is the first time we've done it in this school district since I've been with the school districts itself. The big thing with this is
Well, this early in the school year, adopted budgets before, not the third year. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, let's see. So the budget process, creating a budget process, it takes a full year. So I don't work on one budget. I actually worked on three, four, or five budgets at a time. Last year, this year, and next year, and then the following years after that. Um, the biggest thing is when you're working on a budget, you don't want, if I'm working on next year's budget and trying to hammer that out, then it's way too late. Um, you always have to work a few years ahead because it's just way the school finance rules on any side of it. So uh, when doing it, you know, I meet multiple meetings with um, administrators of the departments in the schools. So I meet with every single uh, administrator to see how did it go this year? How is it gonna go next year? And what's gonna happen in the future? We conduct listening sessions with the staffs and we get input from them. What do they feel is important? Uh, discussions with the board members to see where they want the, the school, the direction of the school district to go in. And then I also work with uh, multiple business managers throughout the state and then also work with Baird. Um, they're kind of the industry leader of budgeting for school districts. Um, and that is how I make those decisions or come up and compile all that information. So the key aspects of the preliminary budget, by definition, a budget is an estimate of what the revenue expenses will be each year. A preliminary budget is just an educated guess. So what I'm telling you right here is do not come back to me and say, you said we were gonna have fifty-eight million nine hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, because that number will be wrong. I can promise you that. That's the only guarantee I'm gonna give you. The reason for that is one, revenue can't even be finalized. Um, we have to wait for the state to create their biennial budget so they can tell us how much money we're gonna get. That is hugely up in the air. Quick tangent. Um, when you hear the legislation, you can hear stuff about, hey, we're really looking at increasing Fed spending. We're gonna do high-cost Fed Fed reimbursement. When you hear that, it is garbage. Tell them they're doing it wrong. It's the whole of the saying high-sped, high-cost Fed is the same as Fed is like, the lightning bug is the same as the lightning bolt. They're two totally different things. If they increase high-cost spending, it is not gonna do anything for us. So with that, I've also, when I've created this budget, it's a conservative budget, knowing that the figures can change significantly. I'm a lot more solid on my expenses. I'm on my revenue, but um, I'm, I've built that in to make sure that we're gonna be all right. So so this is uh, at the end of this presentation, what I'm gonna ask you to prove. This is the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget for Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-Six. There isn't a requirement by the state that the board adopts a preliminary budget. You can do, when it's presented, it isn't in a set way, like you need to show this and this and this, like it is with the annual budget that we do at the end of October. What I'm looking at or pulling in here is Fund Ten and Fund Twenty-Six. Those are the main general operating budgets. You're not seeing Fund Twenty-One, which is school activities. Not seeing thirty-eight, thirty-nine, which is our referendum debt, uh, Fund Fifty with school, uh, the lunch program, seventy-three, which is our old PEP, forty-six, which is the capital projects. Those are, you know, I'm working those on the background, but those don't have a direct effect on but that isn't, it isn't really material and it isn't very that much.
Can I add one thing to that? One of the things that's so frustrating is we have to make our staffing decisions by this time, even though we don't have our revenue. And I just think that's really important that I continue to remind people that if we were going to eliminate positions or lay anybody off, that has to happen before today because of the statute language and how that works. So we have to go off of our best guess as to what our revenue is, which is why we're bringing this to you sooner than later, because we want you to see kind of how we're planning uh, for our budget going into the school year, even though it's not really required until October.
Um, so I'll get more into, oh, go ahead.
Can you tell us the non-program transactions? You're cutting a million and a half out of there. What did you?
I'll get it back. So this is the high-level Fund Ten. Of course, Nick asked, he actually wanted to do details. So this is what it looks at. First, we're gonna start with the revenue, changes in revenue. This is the revenue that we bring in for the school district that makes about, um, well, the revenue limit makes about eighty percent of that. So to begin with, you're looking at it in property taxes. You can see that we have a reduction of three hundred and forty-four, no, increase of three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That's when you compare the last, the revenue we're gonna get this year is actually significantly less. That's where you're gonna run into issues. That's where we're into issues with the, the referendum that we pass. Everybody thinks, oh, you're taxing me more. The school districts get more money. We're taxing you more and the school district's getting less money. That's the, the roundabout thing and what's driving that is a reduction in equalization aid. So if you jump down to here, I can see, I have to see this far. It's right here, equalization aid.
Make it a bigger bottom there. There you go.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. So the equalization aid right here, right here, is reduced by seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We're getting less money from the state as well as getting less revenue. So when we come in and say, like, I'll get into a little more, you get three hundred and twenty-five dollars more per kid. You're getting more per kid, but the state's giving us less money and that's why it's driving up property taxes. So this number, also really big estimate. It's based upon our expenses, our revenue, our enrollments, but also other districts to see how we compare out there. So this number's gonna change. There's gonna be an estimate out on July one. Go look at the estimate. Don't hold anything to it though, because of a lot, there's gonna be a lot of changes. Nobody's financials are done because the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. So um, the next line, open enrollment, that's just a kind of trending, so a thirty-thousand-dollar increase. Uh, we're losing AGR, Sage, um, that's declining enrollment. We have less kids because it goes by pupil. We're getting less because of that. The, so this number, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase is a personal property tax. The reason that number is higher is because I underestimated for this year. The reason we did that is another smoke and mirrors game that the state is playing where they gave us a million dollars in property tax adjustment. Last year, the last two years, they put that what's called outside the revenue limit. So when they do that, that's just money. That's cash in our pocket. That's awesome. From what I understand, working with other business managers, where it went Baird, it's because the, the government didn't know what they wrote when they wrote it. Now they figured out what they wrote and they wrote it wrong. They're putting it right back inside the rev limit. You just lost seven hundred thousand dollars. Just, just like that. We lost seven hundred thousand dollars because of, um, they just rewrote the line and dealt with the revenue limit. On top of that, we have our per pupil categorical aid. That's the seven hundred and forty-two dollars we get per kid. Got less kids, you get less money. Uh, other state categorical aids, that's just an estimate. It's based upon the trends. The federal revenue excluding pandemic funding, we see a reduction of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Those are federal grants, titles, and things like that. Crystal went over, we got our, our numbers uh, last week. Um, they called me the week before that to say, to give me the bad news and say, you were getting a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars less. So boom, just like that, we lost another two hundred thousand dollars.
And that's the federal title support.
Yep. And it's absolutely zero that we can control on that. That is, they're looking at poverty levels from the census data and they just said, you're not as poor as the other people. And the state of Wisconsin isn't as poor as the other states, so the state of Wisconsin gets less money, so we get less money. And that's just ends up losing that money. Um, and then the other big thing that I point out is Esther money. People love talking about Esther money. Um, I'm glad it's gone, but I'm also sad that we don't have that money. We maximize Esther money, I think, better than probably most school districts in the state of Wisconsin. We use it down to the penny. I was talking to them all the way till December. You had to spend it by September thirtieth, get all your claims in by December. We spent every last penny of it and now it's gone. So that's one point three million dollars in revenue I had last year. It is, that's no longer available to us. So overall, we're down one point five six two million dollars. Actually, that number should probably be two point two million because of the current year budget was understated on the revenue side by a seven hundred thousand dollars on personal property. So revenue reductions. Overall, revenue is going down due to declining enrollment, Esther money being fully utilized, and reduction in federal grants. At the same time, taxes are going up due to reduction in equalization aid. So again, if people come up to you and say, hey, my taxes are going up, you guys must be swimming in money. You can say, no, the state is, oh, because they're not giving us as much money.
So again, I just want to reiterate what that means. That means we get the same amount of money into the school district. The portion that is paid by taxpayers is greater than the aid that we get from the state. So that portion has changed, but the amount we get as a school district has stayed the same. Is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Uh, this is the revenue limit worksheet. I guess we throwing this out there. We're trying to do a presentation on the revenue just so people understand that I don't get to just make up the num, money. This is how it goes in there. It's a terrible formula that you better make every single number is correct. And yeah, I can't drive it. I mean, the big thing is the enrollment down here and then you got your three twenty-five increase. Um, and it gets all the way down to this number, which you can't even see, but that's a six point eight zero. That's your mill rate. I'll get into that in a little bit. So per pupil increase, stated this forecast to give three hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. Again, it's the, the political game, the Tony Evers, let's do the Vanoway veto. Hey, look, you got three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's not a good thing for anybody. Or it, it, it sets us, that's the amount you're gonna get and locks you in and it's not even up to inflation. It doesn't really help us. Um, the increase, so the increase is eaten up by the recent enrollment, declining enrollment. So when you look at it, you get three hundred and twenty-five dollars extra. And you got three thousand nine hundred and seventy kids. So you get an extra one point three million dollars. But at the same time, you just lost a hundred and fifty-two kids that are bringing eleven thousand six hundred. So you just lost one point eight million dollars. Now, when you're thinking about that, a hundred and fifty-two kids, we got thirteen grade levels, right? K through twelve. Um, that could count to about eleven per um, grade level. And then you have at least two to three classes in every grade level. When you do the math, that's one kid per class. How much expense can you reduce by taking one kid out of somebody's third-grade class? Can't reduce much, but you can reduce your, your revenue by one point seven million dollars. Schools are really good. Take, give me one more kid. I'm not gonna add much expense. Take one kid, I can't reduce much expense either. So you hit that threshold where you lose enough kids that you can cut staff. So the whole one point seven doesn't hit us immediately because we have a whole, whole harmless exemption, which closes a gap, and then a decline in enrollment exemption, which delays it because we do enrollment off of three-year rolling. So um, my terror right now is when the junior classes here graduates next year with three hundred and sixty kids and we replace them with two hundred and thirty kids and then boom, we just lose a hundred and thirty kids. Three years from then, that's when uh, that's when we cry. So uh, so the revenue calculation, I just wanted to go a little more in depth. Here it is where when you do that, red, red ones on a spreadsheet, you're going in and looking at it and seeing the total money you're bringing. So here it's fifty-one point one, here you have fifty-one point five. So that's the minor increase that you're getting. Even though when we get into expenses, you're gonna see we have different expenses that are increasing. The other side of it is taxpayers. They're gonna come in and say, you know, what's this gonna look like for me? You can look at it two ways. One, your mill rate is gonna go down, which people think, hey, my mill rate goes down. I pay less in taxes, right? No, your mill rate goes down, but that's because your total value and all the property in the city or in the district goes from three point six billion to three point seven billion. So yes, the mill rate does go down, but your levy, the levy as a whole goes up. So again,
Because our, because our property value as a district has gone up.
Yep. So again, I wanted to emphasize, people can't say that I didn't tell them taxes are gonna go up unless something changes at the state level. Taxes will go up. So in the best case scenario, the mill rate goes down, but taxes still go up and that's due to the decrease in equalization aid and increase in property value. Also, if the state decides that they are going to, you have school districts more money, but they don't follow it up with equalization aid. That means property owners are just going to pay that bill as opposed to the state. So expenses, there was a reduction in expenses overall. A larger reduction in expenses were due to eliminating expenses associated with Esther funds. So we maximize those Esther funds. Um, moving them around, you might actually look into the Esther funds paid for teachers this year. That's because I took money and paid for teachers out of Esther, took that money I was gonna pay for teachers and paid for other That's because I took money and paid for teachers out of ESSER, took that money I was gonna pay for teachers and paid for other stuff that we're not gonna pay worry about one time. Curriculum spending, uh, we got the new elementary reading program was higher in twenty-four, this year than it is gonna be next year, we're still buying math next year, but I'm trusting Crystal when she says we're not spending more on reading stuff.
Not in such as elementary reading.
Uh, and then we have a significant reduction in Fund Forty-Six, uh, contribution to the budget, so again, what's the first thing that cuts when we run out of money? Let's stop, it's on the schools and then you get into the predicament we're having it too.
Can I ask a question about the third bullet? Um, the change in the curriculum, the adoption that we've made for our curriculum was a direct result of Act Twenty requirements. Where are we at with any reimbursement to districts on those Act Twenty expenses?
Well, the money would have to be released to DPI to determine how that would even get divided.
So it has not, we have not received any reimbursement for those materials?
Not even been released to DPIs. Make a formula and determine.
We've incurred that entire cost.
We have incurred that entire cost, and I, when they initially, probably a year ago, gave some like, here's where we're thinking a formula might land on what you might get. Like, I mean, I'm ballparking, if we get reimbursement, we'd be maybe getting between like thirteen and twenty thousand dollars on a half a million dollar purchase. So it is important to know that when you purchase elementary reading or elementary math as a package, you typically purchase that for a six to seven year contract with the company for the online resources, the consumables for the students, so it's kind of a one-time expense for like seven years, is our new upcoming contract for elementary reading, and we will do a similar thing with math when the time comes.
If you get that funding, that thirteen, twenty K, is that just once, or is that over like seven years?
That's just once. Yeah, I, there, that conversation has been very quiet from the state level, because they're kind of at the mercy of having the money even released to them to be able to determine how districts would, how it will be pushed out to districts for reimbursement, so we will apply for reimbursement if and when the time comes. It just won't be likely very much money to support the work, because the product.
Um, so when we get deeper into the expenses and the change in salary and benefits, um, when you just get down to the final number, salary and benefits are increasing by six hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars is the initial estimate. I do have to give a huge amount of credit to Molly and Molly's team and then Corinne specifically. Um, when I took this role, the, how you predicted salary expenses and employee expenses was this huge Excel spreadsheet, which were just formulas everywhere and you do estimates. I had zero confidence in it, and then I actually talked about, talked to it with Molly and Corinne and Corinne said, well, I got this great tool, everybody says it's really good, let's try it out. We tried it out last year, employee management, it is spot on.
It's part of Skyward, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's part of our current package, right?
Yep, it did not cost anything extra, we just weren't leveraging it. I told Corinne this is my issue, Corinne went in and said, I'm gonna figure it out, and it is crazy accurate, um. I mean, it's as good as the data that comes in. The big variable now was, we might have somebody that, somebody leaves and we don't replace them, or um, we need to add in a teacher or some other thing like that, but the salary expense or salary projections is spot on and that's a, it's a huge thing for, for Corinne and HR, so. Um, the salaries and benefits increased as expected, um, but there were savings from eliminated positions that reduced some of that expense, which we always have to look for. And we're always, anytime somebody leaves the district, if there's a position open, there has to be an evaluation of do we need to replace that position? We just don't pencil it up and say it's gonna happen, um, you have to go through and look and, and make sure that's something that needs to be done. So again, revenue went down, but our salary expenses and benefits went up by seven hundred thousand dollars. So changes in other expenses, so salary and benefits, one, in Fund Ten, they account for thirty-nine million of the total expenses. Then we have an additional seven point one million dollars, which is a Fund Twenty-Seven transfer, that's our sped. Ninety-five percent of that is salary benefits, so in essence, it's forty-six million dollars of the fifty-eight million dollars that is for salary and benefits. That leaves all, to run the rest of the operations of this district falls into here. So first of all, there's open enrollment, that's, uh, we've just been going off that trend, and one action I really have right now is trying to figure out, um, for increasing enrollment is pulling back kids that open and roll out. Um, so hopefully, you know, we can trend in the right direction on that side of it. We have the voucher programs, we have one, uh, school here in Superior that does that. Um, that's three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. You got your non-capital and capital objects, um, inside of that, we had a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. There's five hundred thousand dollars was for, um, the English books, the reading books. And then we also had two hundred thousand dollars in security cameras budget to go, because that was part of the referendum, um, to the all the, so increase the cameras at um, the One Twenty-Seven transfer increases by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. When you have Fund Twenty-Seven, you have maintenance of effort, it means you can't really drop it. And frankly, we, I don't think we have the ability to drop it, you know, sped needs are going up and we don't even fill all the positions we have open, so. Uh, transfer to Fund Forty-Six, that's a significant reduction, so we, we're going down by one point four million dollars, because we put a significant, we budgeted a significant amount to go into this year. Um, I'm always looking down the road, I'm really terrified of how I fix or replace the roofs on middle school and middle nights, that's a huge amount of money. And going to the public right now for a capital referendum does not seem like a very good idea. Um, so right now, this, in this model, I have a budget of five hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't even cover a tuck point project that we plan on doing at Great Lakes next year. But we do have money in that Fund Forty-Six account, as you can see by the, the one point nine that we put in this year. And then there's all the, all the other expenditures sitting there, which is the seven-five, um, and we're showing reduction there. So the big question, one, people think your district, you got fifty-eight million dollars, you guys must be wasting money if you ain't got any money to do it. Well, as you can see, it comes down to where we have about seven point five million dollars to play with to run the rest of the, the school district. Um, and these are the other larger expenses that people don't see or fully understand. We have seven hundred thousand dollars just to pay insurance, I met with our insurance broker today, was able to get a better quote on our workers comp, let's say just twenty thousand dollars, the health insurance, um. That's significant, that doesn't fall into this though, but, um, we're always looking at how we can reduce our expenses out there, computers, they're not cheap. Um, transportation is, you know, that's, it's a one point two million dollars for busing kids, we got over thirty buses, um, that we need to make sure they're running buildings and grounds, um. It's an extensive amount of money that we're spending out. Another big one is common school funds, that's the only place where they just keep giving you money hand over fist. And you just like, stop giving me money, because they handcuff that money so much that you can't really spend it on anything, except like lots of books. We have worked really closely.
Crystal thinks that's a good thing.
Um, uh, we have worked really closely, Jody Wright kind of runs the common school funds to make sure that we are maximizing it, and we've figured out ways to push some of the expenses, we have an IT and things like that, it, it falls under common school funds. But it is really, really limited on what we can do, but we're always trying to maximize it, I work with other business managers. Um, you should hear what some of the other business managers say with common school funds, but, um, I'm a nice guy compared to them. And then the other ones is utilities, one point four million dollars, gonna keep the lights on, be water, be the buildings and stuff, so. So goals of the preliminary budget, it's to, for the education of the board and the public. Um, it's transparency, to see people can see what we're using our taxpayers' money for. It's also part of the line of credit, and to be, uh, signed up for, I know, you were on the board last year, we did it like two or three times in a very short period. That's gonna become a consistent thing where we just kind of do once a year. Thankfully or nicely, I have not touched that, um, we are doing pretty good on cash flow right now, we're really managing our money to make sure we can maximize everything and not have to use our line of credit, because money is expensive nowadays. Um, that'll be coming out probably July or August, like I said, I'm not too worried about it. And then this also gives the people the ability to advocate for proper public education funding. Um, you're gonna hear a lot of stories right now, the way that's been flowed to Joint Finance Committee is you hear a lot and then you hear nothing. I think we're in the nothing stage now, and like last year was just amazing, all of a sudden you wake up and like, yeah, we need to do a budget though. Like, it came out of nowhere, I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen this year, but we don't know, so. Again, there's the preliminary budget that I'm asking. Questions at all?
I just appreciate how much more transparent, and you just really break it down, um, for board members to better understand, you know, that it took me a long time to try to understand any of this and even still, like, I learned things from you, so thanks for your really hard work on being so detailed.
Will we get this then, as well?
You can have it, maybe I'll modify, I gotta, just do, pull boxes and do spell check, so. It's nice when my boss figures out I can't spell revenue.
I was thinking, yeah, you had another one up there too, but I didn't point it out.
I, I think just for me and the way that I, you know, this is great, what you just gave, and like, now to go back and chew on these numbers a little would be helpful to like.
I think it'd be helpful if we sent this out, and I know, Kate, were you gonna, you had one too, yeah, yeah, so, we'll follow up with a couple of them, yeah. And next week we'll make our final decision.
This is a revenue decision for next week.
Yep. Plus, if you have any questions over the course of the week, it's helpful to, right, to talk through that over the course of the week.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, I have no discussion items, we have one informational item, which is Fund Ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
Just kidding. Just, like I said, I think we're gonna be on target, we're gonna be on revenue side, and maybe, maybe a little lower on the expense side. Uh, revenue, we get a huge chunk of money here in the middle of June, um, our equalization aid comes in like in sixteen. You'll see a receivable level here, that just means we're gonna get our tax money, we don't get that till August, but if so, if you recognize it this year. On the expense side, it is, uh, some open enrollment stuff, but then we're doing the payables, um, so all the employees, the teachers get paid year round. Yeah, twenty-six checks and whatever it is. Um, we have to do a payable, or, yeah, payable, and all hit right in by most.
Okay. I believe that is it there, Mr. President.
Thank you. Couple of reminders before we adjourn, graduation is this Friday. Ask to be at the facility between six-thirty and six-forty.
Concession.
At concessions area. We'll get our assignments and who will be up at what times and which group of kids to hand out diplomas. Um, next Monday, June ninth is, is our next regular board meeting. We will be in closed session at five o'clock and return at five-thirty. With that, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, is there any further discussion?
To say that we had site visits the past couple of weeks and it was really great to be able to get into the building and see the kids and celebrate successes and hear about some challenges and, I don't know, this time it just, it was really good, so I just, I'm so proud of that.
I'd agree, I was sharing with Nick that I got a random size behind the back side of my kid and I was like, oh, this made my whole week. It was great, schools are awesome, they really are.
All right, anything further? Hearing none, all of the papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries, we are adjourned.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.